Good evening, calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, November 9th, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is John Curd, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
Joe Carroll?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Good evening. This meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. For the, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Sharing public asset access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments, even if members of the public do not provide comment. Participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Novus Agenda Dashboard. And we recommend the members in the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on certain agenda items. After members have spoken, I, as the chair, will afford the public comment opportunity as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name in a four-three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. All right, and that takes us to number two on our agenda tonight. Oh, actually, I should make one preliminary announcement before we get to this agenda item. We had posted a meeting, a joint meeting with the Arlington Housing Authority to appoint a new Housing Authority member. We're, I was still trying to lock down a date with the chair of the Housing Authority. That was erroneously posted. That was my fault. So that is still posted on the agenda, but we're not going to take that up tonight. We're going to announce a future date for that particular item. All right, so now we have a quarterly budget update for a quarter fiscal year 2021. Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director, and Eda Cody, our Controller. Mr. Poehler?
Thank you, Chairman Heard. Thank you, members of the Select Board. It's nice to see you all here tonight. I'm going to go through this letter that we have delivered to you and is available on the town website. Just as an overview, I think this has been a very interesting time to look at our quarterly reports because of everything that's going on with COVID. Notwithstanding what might be happening, I think the good news is that overall, generally, our general fund revenue is coming in as expected and our expenses have not gone way up because of COVID. I'll explain some of the reasons for that. There are tighter budgets on the enterprise funds, and I will also explain that and explain some of the things that have been happening even more recently. But generally, I think we are pleased to see the numbers as they've come in. On the expense side, we have had substantial COVID-related expenses that are not generally, they're not part of this report, but I will say that we have submitted almost $3 million in reimbursement under the CARES Act. Both actual expenses and anticipated expenses between now and December 30th, which is the end of the CARES Act. Those expenses are both for the town side or municipal side and on the school side. We've submitted all the paperwork. We then have to follow up once we actually expend the money to make sure we get it all. We've simultaneously also submitted reimbursement from FEMA for a lot of our COVID-related expenses. So to the extent that we've had a lot of extra overtime, I've had to buy supplies for things like computers for, for the schoolchildren so they could learn at home. That is all pretty much been funded by CARES and is not coming out of the reports you're seeing today. So I just want to give you that general overview. The other thing I wanted to say about the report is we did change around how it was laid out. Last time we put things in alphabetical order, but at the suggestion of Select Board Member Mahan, we have listed them in the same order that they appear in the Munis Report, so that you can track them in that same order, which may make it easier for you to go back and forth between the different things. So I hope that does make it easier for everybody on the board. And of course, Eda and I, as we put these things together, we're always happy to accommodate what your interests and needs are. And so we look forward to hearing from you. I would also say because of the coronavirus era, we've listed more of the spending changes as they've been from the 25% goal that is in this quarter than we usually would. Just because I think we wanted to be a little more comprehensive and show you where things were. Overall, there have not been major deviations from the 25% spending. And so if we look at the, at the moment memo here, again, we've we've gone through a lot of departments. Some are just a couple of percent off like the Select Board because they paid our MMA dues at the beginning of the year. But they're otherwise, their spending is below target. Similarly, the assessors had to pay a lot of their Patriot System bills for their software to manage our property base. So that's, looks a little higher, but it's normal for this time of year. Human Resources has encumbered a lot of its budget for training that will go on later in the year through the National League of Cities on so-called real training around a lot of issues around race and other equity issues. So it's just encumbered. Information Technology has paid a lot of its fees upfront. Again, all software-related. The town clerk was slightly ahead because of the spending rate related to COVID and for printing its ballots. Again, I think most of the COVID-related spending will end up showing up in our CARES Act fund and will basically come off those books once we get that money in. Elections has spent 31% of its budget mostly because of the primary election. And then in this next quarter, you'll see another big chunk because of the, the national elections. Facilities does encumber a lot of its utilities upfront, so we think that's normal. Public Works, again, they encumber a lot of their accounts, particularly their waste collection, which is a big part of their budget. Again, consistent with prior years. Health Department is pretty much on target. So is Veterans, a little bit more because of encumbrances and Library because of paying some of their Minuteman dues. So I think Eda and I were pleased to see these numbers coming the way they were and I would, I think I'll keep going unless people have questions at this point, but I'll just keep going. There are other expenditures and then talk about our revenue and then get into the enterprise funds. All of our other spending is on target with previous years. We've spent about a third of our debt that relates to when we issued that debt. And so that is just a bill that comes due. We've totally, we've 100% budgeted for that debt, so we're fine. Minuteman is all encumbered upfront because we know what that's going to be and we're going to pay that through the year. We pay our pension obligations upfront. And our insurance, which is our, mostly our property insurance is highly expended again because we spend that upfront. Those were the areas that I thought there was a variation from the 25% rule, so we wanted to call those out. So that's what was going out. It's been coming in. Our largest source of revenue, 78% of our collections comes from taxes and our collection rate is right at 25%. As you also probably are aware, we did put the first estimates for the high school override that, for the debt we sold last year on the, on the estimated bills for the first and second quarter. So those are showing up in our collections at the actual amount that they'll come in as the final actual bills will come out this winter and spring. We'll have the prop two and a half increases and any increases for actual bills based on new growth for different properties. But right now, we are right where we should be. Motor Vehicle Excise is only 7%, but that mostly comes in in March. Couple of other categories coming in slightly better penalties and interest because the treasurer's done a good job of collecting some back taxes and some of the interest and penalties that come when people pay those came in, in the first quarter. Other departmental income. The Treasurer's Office also has been issuing a lot of municipal lien certificates. I think some people are still refinancing or maybe selling their homes or converting things to condos, so we see that. The other thing I just wanted to mention, which is, I think, significant was both our hotel and meals taxes. Um, we did get revenue in the, in the first quarter, which was very good to see. Compared to previous years, these numbers are down. We're only getting about a third of our hotel taxes and only about two-thirds of our meals taxes at the rates that we've had before. We lowered those estimates for FY '21 because we were pretty concerned about what would happen with those. So the actual collections are coming in above, above our very conservative estimates. And we thought that some of these payments might be delayed by the state until later in the year, but it's been confirmed to us that that would apply only to some of the smaller restaurants who have the, or hotels, which we, this isn't really the case here in Arlington, who have the option of delaying their tax payments if their liabilities are under $150,000. But we really haven't seen a lot of that. We don't get to see who pays the taxes. We just get the final amount. So that was sort of a nice income to be coming in now. I was pleased with that. Our fines and forfeitures continue to lag somewhat. Again, I think the police department has been issuing fewer speeding tickets and so forth. And so that, that number's been down a little bit. So all that is within the general fund. We've had otherwise, I think, been on target with our collections. I think the big thing we're going to look for is if there's an impact on the Motor Vehicle Excise Tax, which we'll see in March. And we'll continue to very closely watch the hotel tax and meals taxes that comes in. I'll turn to the enterprise funds and say that well, some are sort of better than others. The Water and Sewer Fund has expended or encumbered 56% of its budget, but it it pays all of its offsets to the general fund at the beginning of the year and encumbers a lot of things like our MWA assessment. So it is usual that they would have that coming in this time of year. Revenue overall is coming in at at, at 61%. However, I think that is a lot because we have so much of the general fund subsidies that have come in earlier for the MWA debt. So that is a little bit little bit not telling you the story of what's coming in. In fact, revenue from collections is coming in only at 24% this year. So we do think that that is slightly below the 25%, but overall, we think it, you know, that they're on target. And I think it reflects the fact that we did raise the rates and started collecting those raised rates with the July bills. So I think the Water and Sewer Fund is looking good. AYCC has expended 33% of its budget and has collected 31%. Again, their actual collections are only, have been only 19%. So expenses are running slightly ahead. I think there's some collection issues involved there too, in terms of the revenue coming in. So I've talked to Christine and about what's going on in that fund. I, I think it's going to be on target. It did well last year, came in above on revenue, so I'm not too worried about it. COA Transportation, their activity has been very limited this year, so they've expended very little of their budget. Their collection rate has been relatively high just because of the $50,000 subsidy that comes from the general fund, so that overall, small expenses with the disruptions of COVID and the work at the senior center. So I'm not too worried about that. The one area that I, the two areas that have been most severely affected are the Ed Burns Arena, in other words, the hockey rink. They've expended 45% of their budget. Much of that is because they've encumbered a lot of their budget and have paid things like their health insurance upfront. Their spending rate would otherwise be 23% this year, which is not too bad. What has hurt us is the collection rate. The vast bulk of its revenue does come in later in the year. So they've only collected 12% so far. But as you probably know, also, the, the state ordered closure of hockey rinks for a couple of weeks recently. That has had some impact and will have in the second quarter on their revenue. I think we are, again, talking very closely with Joe Conley about that to make sure that if there are further closures or cutbacks because of COVID, that we take steps to cut back our expenses. Most of that would be in personnel because all the other expenses, things like keeping the ice going. We just have to keep it going. You can't kind of melt it and bring it back again. It gets a lot more expensive to do that. Joe has been doing a great job, however, of getting people in and renting the breakout, so I think if anybody were in charge of this rink now under these difficult conditions, I'm very happy that Joe Conley is. I think he's been doing an excellent job. The Recreation Fund, again, their, both the revenue is down, only about 9% collection and their expenses are down. Again, a lot of the programs that they would otherwise run, they've not been able to to run. So that means we don't have expenses for contractors who run a lot of those programs, but we also don't have revenue. So I think overall during the year, I expect everything to be down. Again, talking with Joe Conley about how this is going, we've tried to keep track of things to make sure that our core expenses don't exceed our, our revenue. Again, as we'd expect because of COVID, those two enterprise funds are running behind and we will have to keep a close eye on them throughout the year. With that, that's the narrative. There are the numbers, there are plenty of numbers on this sheet. Again, they're in the same order as on the Munis Reports and then all the Munis Reports are attached. So I would be happy at this point to answer any questions that members have. I would also ask Eda Cody, our Controller, if she has any comments or anything else she would like to add before we go to questions. Eda?
Hello, this is Eda Cody, the Controller. No, you did a great job, Sandy. I think you've covered everything. But of course, I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
That is why I always call on Eda because she always says that, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Poehler. All right, with that, I'll turn to the board for questions for our Deputy Town Manager or Controller, Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would it be appropriate for me now to move acceptance of the quarterly report? And so I would like to do that. I'd like to move acceptance in the quarterly report.
All right. Do you have any additional questions or?
No, 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 actually, I, I do not. You know, I, I understood everything. It was very clear. I actually have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Mahan?
Sorry about that. I couldn't find, but she had screen. My unmute was hidden. I'd like to, for a second, Mr. Diggins' motion. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Poehler and Ms. Cody for making that change. I'm still a creature of habit. I print things out and it's easier for me when I have the first two pages and then I can reflect. It just makes it easier for me. If any of my colleagues are finding it's more cumbersome for them, please let them know. And if it, it's a change that only helps me and it makes it more difficult for my four colleagues, then I'd say switch it back. And then the only question I had, because this is very detailed, and I don't know, I'm going to ask the question, but I'm going to ask Attorney Heim or Mr. Chapdeline, our Town Manager, if I shouldn't be asking it, stop me. And if someone shouldn't be answering it, please let me know. Because I went through and looked through this as best I could. My question is, it's my understanding, and this isn't a sarcastic loaded question or anything like that. In years past, when we've had contract negotiations and one or more of the unions, all of them have settled, everything's fine, but there have been times where one or more of the unions, we haven't been able to reach an agreement for them. And it's been my understanding, and I want to say Mr. Tossi might have explained this one year, but I may not be remembering correctly, that when any union or unions, the town and the union is not able to agree and they take the next step of mediation arbitration, that whatever that percentage that the town offered, unless it's zero, so it's a moot point, but whatever percentage the town offered in the union declined to accept that. Am I correct? My memory is that that money is somehow somewhere in the budget? Is someone highlighting for me right now?
I can answer that. There is a figure. It is on the the fifth page, on the page that's at the very top says year-to-date expenses and revenue. And it has all the departments on it. And the very last line under those departments is our salary reserve. And that is the money that we have set aside to, to settle the contract.
Okay.
At least in this year's budget, there's also money from previous years that is kind of sitting there, but we have set aside sufficient funds to be able to settle the contract at numbers that will meet what we've offered to the union, to the.
Thank you. No, I knew it was in there. I couldn't find it. I, you know, didn't call the manager. For some reason, I thought salary reserve was for like stipends or longevity. I didn't realize that that's, what does salary reserve encompass? Just that one issue?
It is. When all the unions are unsettled, you'll see this in the FY '22 budget, we'll have a much larger salary reserve for all of our unions, but at this point, this is just the amount that we need to set aside for our one unsettled contract with Patrol Officers Union.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would add, Diane, so at town meeting, under the collective bargaining article, when sometimes you'll see X amount awarded to ABC Union for the contract, and then often you'll see a secondary part that will say, in town meeting, we'll vote to set aside X amount for yet-to-be-awarded contract. That's what goes into the salary reserve.
Okay, and I purely asked the question, asked the question. I purposely legally, I'm can't and are not involved in negotiations with union or non-union employees. I just heard a couple of positive comments about discussions from the town and others and basically got a thumbs up that everything's moving along accordingly and respectfully. So I do appreciate that with COVID-19 and everything else that the town manager and others have to deal with. Thank you. Those are my questions and comments.
Great. And Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Poehler and Ms. Cody for the quarterly update. I have a few questions. You had mentioned earlier that you've submitted $3 million in reimbursement under the CARES Act. First and second till the end of the year, additional amounts to seek reimbursement for the criteria.
I had a very hard time hearing your questions, Mr. DeCoursey, so I wondered if you could repeat them, please.
Yeah, I just got an unstable signal there too. So let me, let me start that over again. Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. You had mentioned earlier that the town had submitted $3 million in reimbursement request under the CARES Act. And I just wanted to verify, one, that that was through for expenses incurred through September 30th. And secondly, what a demand, assuming we qualify, could be available for reimbursement beyond the $3 million?
The $3 million is actually a combination of some of what we've already expended and an estimate for what we will expend between now and December 30th. So there's a two-stage process with CARES Act. You first give them an estimate of what you're going to spend. And then you have to follow up with the invoices and, and warrants and so forth to show what you did spend. So we put in for everything that we think that we are going to spend. And then as we spend it, we will then submit the paperwork to show the expenses. And to the extent that at some point we have more of an estimate than we show actual expenses, we would have to return any of that excess money to the federal government or through the state. But at this point, that, that those numbers I talked about are all it's all, everything, it's everything that we think we might expend plus some of what we have expended.
Thank you. In, just for clarification, what you're seeking is expenses incurred. You can't seek reimbursement for lost revenue, for example, for because the rink was shut down or because rotation programs can't be run. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, that is correct.
Yeah, that's right. And then just a second question. On the state aid figure that you have there at the $6.1 million today, is that consistent with what we would see in other years in the first quarter, approximately 25%, 26%? Yes, I know you were happy with the amount. I just want to know timing wise.
Yeah, nope. Go down. Yeah, state aid is consistent with what we expected to see. They do, they actually make a lot of those payments on a monthly basis, so it tends to come in on a pretty even keel throughout the year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Poole or Ms. Cody for the third report. Always, always helpful. It's just one area that I focused in on. Was the AYCC fund, which you note here, you'll continue to monitor closely. You said that you think you'll be all right there, but I do note here that. That service demand is running, you know, higher than normal and I, you know, that's an area of concern. For me, it's obviously it's a very difficult time for a lot of families and so there's a strain now. I, you said there are collection issues. I assume that some of that's insurance reimbursements. And I'm just wondering, is there any connection to the shift to telehealth? Does that change reimbursement rates or the experience of putting in for reimbursement?
I think it's just been the timing of when money came in rather than. A problem with being able to collect the money. And so I also think that over the summer, some of the. Activity was probably lower and the sessions happen later in the quarter. So that the money just hasn't caught up from the previous quarter as opposed to having a problem with. A different delivery format of health services.
Okay, great. That's helpful. I think it's probably a good time to put in a pitch though to folks recognizing this. This need, I mean, AYCC is the needs-based, it needs blind counseling service for primarily youth. And families and it does rely on insurance reimbursements, but also the. As your report notes, hundred twenty thousand dollar general fund subsidy from us. Some years we're lucky, we get a, an earmark from the state budget as well, but it also relies upon the generosity of. Arlington residents and I just got a postcard in the mail. Today, usually one of the big. One of the funding sources is an annual gala that usually takes place, which obviously won't be taking place this year. In view of the pandemic. So I just like to urge folks who value this as a service in our town to those who are in need of these types of counseling services to go to AYCC. Fifty.org. There is a fundraising goal of fifty thousand dollars to make sure that those services continue. So with that, I have no other, no other questions. Just that plug. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both for the presentation. I always learn a great deal about the town budget when we have these presentations, so I appreciate that. You answer most of my questions on the meals tax collection at one hundred ninety-one percent. I was actually. Surprised that it was so high, but then you mentioned that it was still lower than past years. How much did we reduce the expectation due to COVID?
We reduced it a lot. Our original budget estimate was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we reduced it down to sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because we were very concerned. So yes, there's been a huge. But there will be a big gap at the end of the year from what we've collected in past years.
Right, but it's running pretty well ahead of what we are conservative estimate.
That is correct.
And then just general comments on the Ed Burns Fund. We're just coming off of our two-week break from hockey. We just started again. I am confident, you know, I think we do with the new guidelines that. People will be able to keep that going. I think just the one thing to note is whether or not. The high school plays because that's getting, you know, in the next couple of months, that's really a large revenue source for the rank. Because the hockey club's just about tapped out for the ice time that they need. So, you know, if it does come to the point where the high school doesn't play, which I hope they do. Then that's when we'll start seeing some pretty significant revenue drops in that one particular enterprise fund. Then one other question, just briefly, I did notice on the blue bikes that we had twenty thousand dollars for the budget. But we haven't expended anything to date. When do we pay for the blue bikes since they've been operational for a couple of months?
I do not know when that bill comes due. I can find out and get back to you or I don't know if. But I'd be glad to look into.
But just more of a curiosity thing because, you know, most vendors ask us for funds at the beginning of the process and I know that that's been operating. Other than that, those are all my questions. And again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And I'll just go down by a nod. Does anyone else have any additional questions that they missed? With that, we have a motion to receive the report from Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mrs. Mahan. Mrs. Mahan, I think you're muted. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll go down the line for the other votes.
I'm sorry, I'm back on yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. And that brings us to our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda tonight. Meeting minutes, October fifth, twenty twenty. And vote chapter two sixty-eight, A section twenty B three certification for David Jara. From Michael Radamacher, our director of public works, but to Mrs. Mahan.
Who will approve them?
And Mr. Carroll?
Second.
Mr. DeCoursey, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Diggins, any questions or comments?
Only comment is I hope that he doesn't need the five hundred hours before snow rule.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous though.
All right, and that brings us to a public hearing. Seven thirty PM. Verizon petition nine sixty-one to nine sixty-seven Massachusetts Avenue, Karen Levesque, right-of-way manager. Do we have Miss Levesque with us?
I do not see that name. There is one person joining by phone. Karen, if that is you at the six one seven number. Oh, actually, another, another name has raised their hand. I'm going to guess maybe that's someone here for Karen.
Hello, my name's Mike Kerzick. I work for Pike Telecom and I represent Verizon today.
Thank you, Mr. Kerzick. If you can just tell us a little bit about the petition?
All right, sure. So Verizon has requested to place eight four-inch PVC conduits. From the existing telephone manhole labeled thirty dash thirty between Prentice Road and Mount Burns Street on Massachusetts Ave. This new conduit will run approximately eighty-seven feet southeast down the street to meet an existing conduit in the sidewalk. The new conduit. Will be placed in the same path as existing conduit that was placed in nineteen seventy-five. We would like to, Verizon would like to have this work. To perform this work as soon as possible to complete the work before any seasonal dig more time takes place. The reason for this new conduit is to. Sorry, to expand the fiber network in the area. And placing this new conduit will also leave space for any future needs as well.
All right, thank you. I'll turn to the board for any motions, questions or comments. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to bring a motion, but I also have a couple of comments too. I'll move approval subject to the conditions laid out in the recommendation from, from the town's engineering department. Question for Mr. Kerzick and then a comment. In the petition, it does mention the possibility of making connections with telephone poles. And I see on the plan, it looks like the conduit is going to extend from a manhole on Mass Ave, you indicated. Onto the sidewalk. Is it dent connecting? Well. If you know, is there more equipment that will be added to the telephone pole as a result of this?
This is actually tying to an existing duct bank, so it's going to be very existing pipes that dead end under that sidewalk. And this petition is to extend those existing conduits to the existing underground manhole structure.
Okay, so there's nothing that affects the overhead wires?
Not, not unaware of.
Okay, Miss Levesque isn't here tonight. Mr. Chairman, if you'll just indulge me for a moment. And perhaps through our select board office, we can reach out to her after this. I, I didn't know if this was going to incorporate the polls. We don't have Verizon in here very often. It's asking for things, but one thing that concerned me and when I saw the plan here. Is just the issue of double polls and I sent something to the manager earlier today. If we can just share that for a moment and this won't take long. I just want to pass this along. This is, this is a double pole on Mass Ave. And again, I was anticipating that there may have been something that was going to affect. The telephone pole with this request. We had a request about a year ago to put what was known as a hip guy that was going to shore up the existing pole. And what happened earlier this year was a new pole was put in. And when a new pole is put in, the existing pole is supposed to be removed within ninety days. That, that picture there was taken on May seventh. The double pole is still there. If you drive up and down Mass Ave and. You, whether it's future. Requests that we have for Verizon or I can take this up under new business. I really think we need to address this issue with Verizon because. The number of double poles is outpacing replacements of double poles. And when you look at the most recent filing with the DPU. Arlington is seeing more and more double poles and I really think it's something that needs to be addressed and something that Verizon and or ever source should be. Should, should be addressing, so we don't see things like this for new poles that are put in when particularly on this one. We received a request that had nothing to do with a double pole and this is what we have. So just a commentary on that, I know, Mr. Kerzick, that's not what you're here for tonight, but it's. We don't see Verizon that much and I wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Mr. Diggins?
Well, Mr. DeCoursey, so many questioning, just opened it up a lot of questions on my part. But this probably isn't the place for them at all. Maybe I'll just take this up, you know, with Mr. Corsey, you know. In, in keeping a course to open meeting laws, so I have nothing beyond that, but to express my appreciation for Mr. Corsey for bringing that up.
And do you want to second his?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'd like to second his motion.
Hey, Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I have no, no further comment.
Mrs. Mahan?
I guess I would ask either the town manager or town council. If this is something, if we can't do it tonight, if we can start doing it in the future, that when we have requests from any. Utility and I apologize to Mr. Kerzick from Verizon, but you're, as my colleagues have expressed, we don't see you all that often. Is there anything we can do on? Mr. DeCoursey's. Motion seconded by Mr. Diggins to. Grant approval subject to. Addressing an area or areas of double poles. Concurrent with that work and I plan on voting for this motion, but I know the chair will. Call on any members of the public at the end of all our remarks, but barring hearing anything from the public, I'm certainly going to support this. So I don't know if I asked my question authfully.
Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a good question. I think that the most appropriate thing for us to do is to accept the motion as. Mr. DeCoursey has drafted it. We have pretty consistent contact with our Verizon liaison. In terms of other matters that are related to polls and note this is, you know, the law. These two different schemes aren't necessarily related to each other. But in order to get compliance with something that has been in existence for a while. I think that Mr. DeCoursey's sort of condition is appropriate. And the only thing I guess I might add to the motion is a sort of severability clause, if you will. I'm sorry to be a little bit technical, but just to say, you know, subject to conditions as set forth to the extent permitted by law. And that way, if it turns out that we, we sort of can't enforce this sort of condition on it. You know, we've, we've sent a clear message and hopefully Verizon will be responsive to that. Without us having to, you know, just say, well, we'll bring it up another time. Does that satisfy the board on this score?
For myself personally, but I don't know if Mr. DeCoursey has anything he'd like to add. If not, perhaps tonight, because we've been dealing with this for over a decade. And when I've been, you know, on foot out in the streets. I'm hearing the same message, you know, we're basically being ignored. It's not by the workers who are out there and the only time we have a chance in, in the only way, my personal opinion that. Since we've tried to play nice for over ten years and the situation is getting worse. I would, if it's appropriate, would ask the town manager and town council if we could. Maybe sort of have a. Checklist for each of our utilities, not just Verizon and when they do come in that we somehow make the vote. If they don't get approval for the projects, then basically that's when they're going to start addressing it in my personal opinion. So I guess I would leave that thought with Mr. Chaplin and Attorney Heim. That, and I understand, you know, we're getting up to the point where work won't be allowed because of seasonal, of the season we're in. But perhaps starting next year. We just have that list and then it's Verizon, EverSource. RCN or whomever come in. And in. Out of respect, let it be known to them before that night. Maybe send them that list and then I just would look to, if I'm still on the board. I hope I'm still on the board when the next request comes in, but. That we stop taking that stance saying, you know, we'll approve your request to put it in service and allow you to continue to make profits. But contingent with that is here's the post ninety days, hundred and twenty days. Three years list. You have to take care of that also. So thank you.
Mrs. DeCoursey, just wanted to circle back to, do you want to confirm your motion to?
Yeah, yeah, and I agree with the severability Attorney Heim spoke about. That's why I asked the question, was the, was a telephone pole on Mass Ave related to this approval? Would that require additional work that could burden the poll? I don't think we can tie it in on this, on this approval, but I just saw this as an opportunity to raise the issue because. DPU receives reports every six months and the last six month period ended May thirtieth. And the number of double poles has increased. And as I said, they've outpaced the number of double poles that are being removed and to me, that's, that's not acceptable. And I think we can do this separately. I don't need to tie it into this approval because frankly, I don't think we can, given. What's being asked for here, but I do think it's something that we should address again and perhaps. Anytime, I think Verizon is the company that maintains the polls in town. Let's simply keep the, their last filing out when they come before us and ask them how they've done. Since their last reporting to the DPW because that's a matter of public record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make sure. So what it sounds like to me, just so I make sure that my marching orders are clear here. Is that we're taking a vote to approve this on the basis of the application before us. But that we're sort of. Even if it's just symbolically asserting that this circumstance with respect to double poles is unacceptable to the town. And that, and what we can to hold them accountable to. The lack of responsiveness on this issue. And, you know, to the extent that it can't lawfully be applied in this circumstance. That's fine, but we'll basically send a message along with the approval here. Is that the correct summary, Mr. DeCoursey and Mrs. Mahan?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, and I put it for that, the lack of progress with double poles, because I understand there's a lot, there's over a hundred of them in Arlington. So they're not going to be eliminated overnight, but, but they, what, there has not been progress made, so that's, that's, that's all. But I think you get it. This is, this is. So that's, that's, that's all. But I think you get it. This is, this is.
All right, um, yeah, I would say it's certainly separate from the issue that's being presented to us today. But it's something that I can speak with the town manager and attorney high with and possibly come back at a future meeting where we can discuss this a little more at length and what what options we might have to to push this along with the utilities. So with that, I have a motion for approval by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Public hearing, sorry.
This is a public hearing. And at this point, if any members of the public wish to speak, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom app.
There's one hand raised, the name of John Ward.
Yep. Mr. Ward, if you just say your name for the record. You are still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Ward. I live at Winslow Towers, and I want to address some of the information that was given to us by Mr. Poole in regards to pension payments that were made. And I want to know that if the town.
Mr. Ward, if I, it sounds like.
You want to confine it to the telephone poles and stuff.
So what we do have an open forum coming up, so if you.
I'll be back later.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional hands raised? Nope. All right, and then we'll close the public aspect of this hearing. All right, Attorney Heim, we have a motion by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Diggins.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Cur.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Yep, and thank you, Mr. Krishna.
Thank you. Now we'll let Verizon know that the double poles are issued.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three minute time limit to present a current concern or request. So at this time, if you'd like to speak during our open forum, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom app, which we will start with Mr. Ward.
So there are two additional hands raised, Mr. Chair. Sanjay Newton and Steve Refleak.
All right. All right, we can promote Mr. Ward. Hey, Mr. Ward, again, if you could just say your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is John Ward. I live at Winslow Towers, and I want to address a subject brought up to us by Mr. Poole with regard to the towns having paid its pension obligations. I would like to know if the town has any pension obligation bonds incorporated within that budget that was presented tonight.
So what you can do is, so we don't do a question and answer on this. So you can bring up any comments and then you can email us or get in touch with any members of the board to get it.
Well, I guess my other, I have two concerns, whether there's pension obligation bonds and whether that amount is appears with the amount that has been considered a pension payment, which is a large number, of course. And the other one that I have I'm concerned about is the health benefit, unfunded health benefits. Nobody, I don't hear too much about that. Is this all something that you suggest that I have to submit it to the board in a question and answer form of some kind?
So you can either email or call somebody in the town that handles this or email somebody on the board.
Okay, so, um, once again, when you say call into the town, I've been over there a lot. There's, there's one lit, one nice, wonderful office lady in Mr. Chapdeline's offices, and the rest of the place is abandoned. What kind of, what number is it that I would need to address to get information about these items?
I was. Best person.
First off, we we've answered these questions for Mr. Ward on numerous occasions in the past. We'd be happy to answer them again. If you call 781-316-3004, Kristin would be happy to put you in touch with either me or Mr. Poole, who could once again clarify these issues for you.
I appreciate that.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. All right. And the next person, Sanjay Newton. And Mr. Newton, if you can say a name for the record.
Yes, I'm Sanjay Newton, 32 Ottawa Road. I'm also a precinct 10 town meeting member. I'm so I'm I'm here tonight rather reluctantly, I guess, to address you about the Black Lives Banner, Black Lives Matter banner. I think there are bigger issues of racial justice for us to be focused on. But Mrs. Mahan stated last week that she was sick of hearing from the same 10 white people. So here I am. I will say that I much prefer watching the select forum meetings later on YouTube at 2X speed, but, you know, here I am. So the board has made very clear that they have the authority over signs and banners. And so I guess my ask is, you know, please, let's let's fix this. I I think the sensitivity here comes because marginalized groups and their allies are used to being sort of swept to the side after the sort of heat of the moment has passed. And so, you know, seeing the banner taken down without a plan, I think has has raised a lot of people's hackles. You know, personally, I would prefer to see the banner go up on Town Hall. But if it was scheduled to hang on a series of town buildings, I can tell you that I would not be here spending my Monday evening with you. So as I already said, you've made clear this is your authority. Please, you know, use it so we can move on to the other important work that needs to be done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Revak.
Hello, Mr. Heard. So this is Steve Ravak at 111 Sunnyside Avenue. I also have a few words to say about the banner. So I recognize that Article 25 is a, you know, it's a resolution without a policy component. And as a town meeting member, I'm probably going to vote in favor of it just because I know that people really like the banner. But to be honest, I wish we could put up a second banner, you know, one that said something like, you know, and the legacy of redlining or exclusionary zoning has no home here. So I want to talk about segregation in housing for a minute because housing policy, which is to say, having the ability to dictate where people can and cannot live, is a significant piece of how segregation in the United States is accomplished. So single family zoning, the idea that you have areas where only single family homes are allowed, was promoted in the 1920s as a solution to the Supreme Court's decision in Worley versus Buchanan. So this is where the court ruled that race based zoning was unconstitutional. So the idea behind single family zoning was simple. If you can't segregate on the basis of race, you can segregate on the basis of what kind of housing people can afford. The idea grew legs. It's a policy that Arlington adopted, and it's a policy we've kept in place to this very day. Racial covenants were another tool. These are deed restrictions that prevent properties from being owned or occupied by people of color. Arlington had these in the 1920s as our farms were being broken up into residential subdivisions. And then there's redlining. These are the actuarial maps drawn by the homeowners Lord Corporation in the 1930s. And there's not a single drop of red on Arlington's map. This isn't surprising. At the time, the Arlington's black population was about 30 something people out of a town of 40,000. As a predominantly white community, we would have been considered a good risk for the, you know, for the mortgage underwriters. So we have a lot of our housing was built after World War II, but with Arlington being over 99% white and the FHA's policies being what they were, it would have been pretty difficult for a black family to have gotten a mortgage here. In 1973, Arlington passed a two year moratorium on the construction of apartments, which is to say, we took a we made it temporarily illegal to build a lower cost form of housing. This is a novel idea at the times. It was the town was sued, but the moratorium was upheld in the courts. So the moratorium was intended to give the town time to rewrite its zoning bylaws, a process that was completed in 1975. So the new zoning bylaw substantially downzoned the town. In effect, they took the built environment that resulted from over a half century of discriminatory housing policy and codified it into law. So those bylaws are still on our books today. So when it comes to fighting and advocating on behalf of black lives, I understand, you know, the BLM, I understand the enthusiasm for the BLM banner. But keep, I really think it's a bare minimum thing that we can do, but it makes people happy. So it's, yeah, it's probably worth doing. What I'm really interested in seeing is whether Arlington is willing to go beyond doing the bare minimum. And I'm particularly interested to see if we're going, what we're willing to do in the area of housing. Thank you.
Mr. Heard, you're muted.
Can't go whole meeting without doing that. One last person on our open forum tonight, we have Benjamin Moynihan. If you can promote Mr. Moynihan. Hi, Mr. Moynihan, if you can say your name for the record.
Thank you, Benjamin Moynihan, 7 Plymouth Street in Arlington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and all members of the select board. Appreciate the opportunity to comment. And before I add to my remarks, I just would reference the previous speaker. There's a book called The Color of Law, A Forgotten History of How Our Government Segregated America by Richard Rothstein that you all might be interested. It's a little more general. The previous speaker's comments were specific to Arlington. But this book is valuable history in the same vein. I'm new to the debate about this Black Lives Matter banner, but I would like to comment on it. I did read up on some of the documents in the agenda, linked to the agenda for tonight's meeting. And I appreciated the opportunity to to read those items. And also the select board's, you know, affirmation that it seeks to support equity, inclusion and diversity in the town of Arlington, which I think is a win win for everybody. I because I am new to the arguments, I guess, and and to the tension that was referred to in that, those notes. I don't quite understand why it has to be posed as a choice between continuing to post the Black Lives Matter banner and adding additional banners, although at some point I'm sure that the surface area of the town hall would be completely covered potentially if there were too many. But like we, the people, that opens the preamble of the Constitution, Black Lives Matter is a simple declarative and and positive statement. And it, because of the history of this country, of which Arlington and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are a part, you know, Massachusetts Avenue being kind of the symbol of the the history from pre revolutionary times to the present. It it is important, and Arlington has an opportunity to affirm the value that Black Lives Matter. And and given some of the challenges that we have a community collectively have had with defacing graffiti and so forth in the last years, even though in many cases those graffiti did not stay up very long, they have left and reopened in some cases scars in our community fabric. And continuing to firmly post the Black Lives Matter banner helps to reaffirm the value of inclusion and equity and diversity that you all already espouse. So I would encourage you to consider retaining it and and consider potentially adding an additional message in a similar vein. But there is a difference between stating that diversity matters, that equity matters, that inclusion matters. Those are all good and very important things to affirm. Black Lives Matter similarly is important to affirm on its own merits. Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, man, that takes us to our open forum to a close. Next, we have final votes and comments, articles for review, Article 8, Acceptance of Legislation, Bylaw Amendment Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Article 25 Resolution, Black Lives Matter Banner at Town Hall. We do have.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
If I may, just quickly.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. I think, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note that a few folks have identified a few typos in article in the Affordable Housing Trust article, make sure to take care of those. And that with respect to I also got a few notes about some other things that I'll make sure to, you know, any clerks, I'll make sure to administratively correct. So if the board wants to, you know, focus on the substance, I'm prepared to capture all those those little typos and stuff.
All right. All right, so we'll go article by article, starting with Article 14. I will go down the line to see if anyone has any comments, changes, questions. Mrs. Mahan.
I'm sorry, did you say 14 or 8?
Article 8, sorry.
I move approval, no questions.
All right, Mr. Diggins.
A second, and no, no further comment.
Mr. Cur.
No further comment, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
No further comment.
And Attorney Heim, should we vote these together as we generally do or?
Yes.
All right, so we'll go to go on to the second article. Article 25 Resolution, Black Lives Matter Banner at Town Hall. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Mahan.
No, thank you.
No, so I'll move approve. All right, I know we're going to do them all at the same time, so no comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the the only comment I would have, I think that this captures our debate pretty well is, but there is some a sentence here that says the decision to display flags and banners on or at Town Hall is solely within the jurisdiction of the select board. I I I see it kind of as a shared jurisdiction. Where where, you know, we affirm that, but, you know, we do know that the facilities, strictly speaking, are under the town manager's control. So I think it is a shared jurisdiction. I don't know through you, Mr. Chair, if council has any comment on that.
Attorney Heim.
I don't have any comment on it. It's it's a, that that particular relationship is a little complicated when it comes to the sort of full range of facilities issues that we were talking about, but I I'm happy to put it in there. That's that's fine.
I have no further comments. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
No further comment.
All right, so we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins to accept Articles 8 in Article 25, Attorney Heim.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Cur.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
And it's unanimous vote. Thanks, folks, for for both at home residents and members of the board who spotted some obscure typos in there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to draft select board report. Number six for discussion and approval, draft select board report to special town meeting, Attorney Heim.
So the good news is, this is not an item on the agenda that really needs to take up a lot of the board's time. I had hoped to have drafted this ready. My bandwidth has been a little bit stretched the last couple of days. And I in reviewing it, there's, there's nothing that I really see that needs to be brought back to the board. I think the limited scope of report, the whole purpose of having this sort of placeholder on the agenda is if there's things that need to be revisited by the board to make sure that I've accurately captured things. But you have already approved all the final votes and comments. is if there's things that need to be revisited by the board to make sure that I've accurately captured things, but you have already approved all the final votes and comments. I think the appendices that need to be added are pretty clear. I'm sorry that I don't have a, just a whole packet, but I'll make sure to distribute it to all of you for any individual, you know, comments that you might have beforehand, but all the votes look good. It doesn't need a vote of approval tonight. Does that make sense? I'm sorry. I asked to have this put on the agenda. You don't know, you don't, for a long time we hadn't done this and then I sort of added it once we were sometimes having these very lengthy select board reports to make sure that everything was, all the ducks were in a row. But in this instance, I think we're, we're in good shape and I'm focused on making sure that your office has the report ready to go ASAP.
All right. Show of hands, anyone have comments for Attorney Hahn? With that, we will move on to our next agenda item, traffic rules and order and other business. Agenda item number seven, vote date for twenty twenty-one annual town election. Attorney Hahn?
Good evening, members of the board. This is a fairly straightforward vote that we take every year to set the date to open the warrant and the I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead, to set the date of the annual town election. This particular year, it's a little bit unusual because I believe the most the, the sort of clear-cut day that the, the, the town election would fall on is Easter weekend. So I believe we've got in front of you a I'm sorry, one second. That ordinarily it's held the first Saturday of April. Unless we vote no later than February first to establish another date in order to sort of better suit public convenience. So I wanted to make sure that this was on your board office, wanted to make sure this was on. So that we selected a date earlier, sooner rather than later, especially if we're gonna approve opening of the warrant. If you look at your sort of calendars, I believe that the Saturday beforehand is Rosh Hashanah. So I think we'd be looking at setting the I'm sorry, it's passover. My apologies, Mr. Curro. So I believe we'd be looking at setting the date the following Saturday. Hold on, I'm sorry. Got a few too many windows open and I'm trying to find the calendar that was posted on the Euro agenda. There we go. So I believe we'd be looking at Saturday the tenth or Saturday the seventeenth of April. I'm not sure if the board has any other specific concerns about either one of those dates, but since the Saturday the third is, is not likely a good date, we need to identify an alternate, an alternate timeline.
Mrs. Mahan?
Um, do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Either Mr. Chair or somebody else, do we know, sometimes it's the same day, but what date Greek Orthodox, Orthodox Easter is, sometimes it's the same day, sometimes it's seven to ten days later. That's the only other concern I have. I, I believe Passover is the last Saturday or Sunday in the month before, but does anyone have that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I just, I just looked it up. It's on my second.
I would have a motion, but I, I see through the chair that my colleagues had their hands up, so I guess I'll wait.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that since I've been on, we, we've gone a number of different ways on this. My, my, my recollection though is that generally we've had conflicts like this. We've tried to go earlier. Now, I don't know if we've ever gone two weeks earlier. But you know, I don't know if we have input from our staff or not, but I, I would have some concerns of going too late into into April. We were starting to get up, you know, against town meeting preparations and, and everything else. My, my, my gut tells me, and I don't know, I mean, Ms. Mahan, you've been, you've set more of these than, than all of us together. You know, my gut tells me that we'd be better off going earlier to the twentieth of March. And I realize that's quite a bit earlier than we typically do first time. I think the first time I was elected to this board, the, the, the date was changed to Tuesday, but we could not do that without a lot of coordination with schools and everybody else.
If I could, Mr. Chair. I don't recall doing it earlier in March. I called when, I do recall when it was in March, we moved it into April and then Mr. Schlipman made the motion. I, I would say just from the select board office part. It would, in my mind, many, many years having worked in there, so I also know the flow of the work. By mid to end of March, where the select board's office is really doing a lot of work as the Warren Article hearings hopefully are wrapping up, but sometimes we're right in the middle of it. And Mrs. Karpalka is calling me, so I'm gonna let my colleagues continue and I may have further remarks.
I got a, got a real-time input from Mrs. Karpalka that said the second Saturday in April is fine. Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, well, I was gonna, I was gonna concur with Mr. Curro because I mean, I think the, the problem with some moving deeper into April, maybe the second week is fine, the, the but if we move any deeper, I mean, then, then I mean, it's hard enough as it is, me bringing in new town meeting members and getting them up to speed before town meeting. And so that really, that really crunches them, you know, and, and so I have become aware lately that we used to do elections a lot earlier. And so be until I heard about the crunch me that that puts on the select board's office. I was really in favor of doing the, this, two weeks earlier. Hey, I guess I'd like to know more about, understand more about the, the crunch, meaning how, well, I'll just stop there. So I'm still at the second week, me two weeks earlier as opposed to a week or two later.
Mr. De Corsi?
Maybe we'll have another one of these votes that isn't five to zero. I, I, I look at it where, where the first Saturday in April this year is on the third. If it was the seventh, I think I'd be inclined to go along with doing something in March, but you still, you know, potentially have weather concerns in, 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 in March. And I would tend to support doing the tenth because it, where it fits in here. It's only three days after the latest date that, that you could potentially have a, a first Saturday in April. So that, that's what I'd be inclined to support.
Yeah. Just similar to what Mr. Corsi just said, you know, I think last election cycle for this round was April seventh. So we're three days off of that. So it's three days instead of two weeks before. So I think I'd be inclined to push for April tenth is assuming that that's what, you know, it works for the board staff and so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could make a motion that the regular town election of town officers, including town meeting members and submission of questions for the voters to the voters of the town shall be held on the second Saturday of April, April tenth, twenty twenty-one.
And Mr. Carroll?
I'll second the motion.
Any additional comments, Mr. Diggins?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
Additional comments, Mr. Corsi?
No.
All right, Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Sorry for the paper rustling. Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
That brings us to item eight on our agenda for approval, opening of the warrant for the annual town meeting twenty twenty-one. Attorney Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a little bit more straightforward. The bylaws require us to open the warrant the first week in December. We need to issue a notice about the opening of the warrant. And so the draft language before you is to open the warrant on Tuesday, December first twenty twenty at eight AM and have it remain open until Friday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, some movements to chairman, I did that, that, that timeframe seems fine.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, this is standard timeframe. We can discuss that some other time. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Carroll, any questions?
No questions.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'm fine with that. And just as anyone who's a town meeting member, but someone who isn't that the annual town meeting will take place, the traditional fourth Monday in April, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. But that's not part of the vote. That's just the mechanics of the vote. Thank you.
Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right. And next item on our agenda, item number nine, discussion approval, Economic Recovery Task Force requests. So first request is liquor license permit fee waivers. Second, let request parking fee waivers. And the third request, Heights Parklet Approval. Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can, I brought up the memo on the screen, but I can give a quick rundown of these three requests. So these are being brought forth by the Planning and Community Development Department in consultation with the Economic Development Recovery Task Force that I know you sit on as well, Mr. Heard. So as you mentioned, the first is an idea that's been discussed now for a couple of weeks and we're comfortable bringing forth, which would be requesting that the board waive fifty percent of the licensing fees for the alcohol licenses for alcohol, beer and wine and club licenses and waiving one hundred percent of the fee for the two theaters in town, given that they've been effectively out of business since the start of the pandemic. I joked in talking with one member of the board today that it's not often that a town manager or someone working in the town's finances would be supportive of giving up on revenue, but given the circumstances and given how important it is that we try to support our restaurants in town, I feel very comfortable making this recommendation. The next request is a continuation frankly of something the board voted on, I believe it is last meeting or the meeting before. The board has voted to suspend metering or, or payment in the lots on the, the last Saturday in November, as well as the first three Saturdays in December as a way of stimulating shopping in Arlington Center. We'd like to ask the board if they would consider extending that payment-free payment-free offering to the street meters as well. So it would be lots and streets for those Saturdays during the holiday shopping season. And then finally, I'll, I'll scroll to the picture of it. There's been, as you've probably seen, a number of parklet installations continually being installed per what the board has approved previously. Great partnership between planning and community development and DPW doing the installations. There's one additional install we'd like the board to consider authorizing before the winter sets in. Whether or not we install it does depend on when we receive it and what the weather conditions are like. But using our shared streets grant, we want to be able to put one additional parklet, and this would be a sort of a a full parklet where we, we are planning to receive platforms that level the landing in the parking space and the curb. And we want to put it in the taxi stand, currently the taxi stand space in front of the MBTA depot. Up in the heights, there's a rendering you can see here on the screen. I'll scroll to a few other versions of that rendering. And this would give another opportunity for people to either take food from one of the local restaurants and go eat there, drink a coffee there, just socially distanced, spend some time with friends or family. So we'd be looking for, again, for the board's approval to make this installation with the understanding that I might come back and say, you know, if, if we've received ten inches of snow by the time we receive this in December, we may not go forward until the spring, but we would like the board's authorization to go forward with that. So thank you for listening to all three, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
All right, Mrs. Mahan?
Just first two questions. Regarding the clubs in Arlington, are they open? For some reason, I was thinking they're still closed.
That's, that is a good question. I know they were closed. I thought they had reopened in a limited capacity. But I, I, I would have to verify that.
I don't know if we can do this, that. Cause I know there's a lot of club members that are saying to me, when can I go back to fill in the blank? Some of the various clubs and that, that they're not allowed to go back. So I mean, I'd be happy to vote for this, but if, and it's not a big number that we're looking at. I would just say if the clubs are open, then fifty percent makes sense, but if they're still closed and not allowed to open the Economic Development Task Force may wanna look at that. And then my second question is regarding the parklets up in the heights. Is, is the proposal, the way I view that, it's two spots for the, the taxi stand and one spot that's just open to the general public? How many spots would it be? Would it be the first open spot in one taxi stand, which is fine by me, or something else?
So I think if you look at this picture right here, it, it takes up effectively one parking space. Is that, I'm, my understanding your question right?
Yeah, and I have no problem with that, but just where it says it's gonna take one of the taxi stands, the, the, there's three parking spaces. What you have pictured there is the one open space. And then the two spaces behind that are for, are the taxi stand.
Oh, oh, that, that front space is, is marked open?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, what, it doesn't have a sign that says this is open, but the sign that says taxi stand appears at number two parking spot where the parklet's at number one. And it has the arrow for the two spaces going east. So I'll let you work out the mechanics of that. It's just, I know in the heights, they've lost a lot of spaces. Not lost, we're reusing spaces in the heights for public parking. So my thing would be if, if it works and hopefully we're not deluged by snow. Perhaps maybe leave that one public space open and move it over. But if you don't do it that way, that's fine. So I'll let my other colleagues ask any questions and see if anyone wants to make a motion, but I'm happy to support a motion to do that, looking into the clubs issue and that location of the park. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I mean, I would definitely say to Ms. Mahan's first point. If the board is comfortable approving a contingent vote on the clubs such that if they're open, it would be a fifty percent waiver, and if they're closed, a hundred percent waiver, I, I can certainly work with that. And in regards to the suggestion about, you know, taking a taxi stand space as opposed to a public parking space, I, we, that's, we can absolutely work that out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval, subject to those conditions.
Yep, thank you. All right, Mr. Carroll?
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
And Mr. Diggins?
Um, Mr. Chair, can you come back to me? I'm having some technical problems here.
Yep, Mr. Corsi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions. And I, I support all three measures in, with the additional language that Mrs. Mahan provided.
I also support that. I think particularly the first item about the, the licensing fees. This is something that we've heard from a few entities and, you know, a lot of the businesses rely on unresponsible liquor sales as part of, as ancillary to their food sales. So I think this is what we have to do to help our businesses to keep them going. Mr. Diggins, you good?
Yes, I'm back. Thank you. Yes, I, I agree with Mr. Heard. I mean, I fully support it of the reduction in liquor license fees, meaning especially the complete removal or, or complete reduction for the, the theaters. On the, on the park list though, did I read correctly that one was being moved? Me that the, that, that we were adding this one by the MBTA station, but that it was, that another one's being moved? Am I wrong about that?
Mr. Chaplin?
And Mr. Diggins, referring to that being mentioned in this memo or hearing that separately?
No, mentioned in the memo. Yeah, I was trying to bring it back up. If I miss, if I'm misremembering, that's fine. It's not a big deal. I was just kinda curious.
I so I, I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
I'm not seeing it here. I do know that we had originally thought about putting this part, this parklet application with these platforms in Broadway Plaza. And based on concerns raised by DPW, working with planning and community development, we decided to propose this location rather than Broadway Plaza. Could, could that be?
No, no, I was, I was thinking that there was the one across the street and, and so, so I thought maybe this one was the one that was across the street. So, so I'm, that's fine. So, so that's fine, because also one of the rationales I remember reading about this was that it allowed for people to see, like MBTA users, riders, to see the oncoming traffic.
I'm not sure I understand.
So I thought one of the rationales for this was that by having this parklet here, that people who use the bus would be able to see the oncoming traffic. Or like see what's coming towards them or, or I assume my dad meant that they'd be able to see whether the buses were coming or not?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, certainly being further out can tell you, you know, gives you a better sight of when the bus is approaching, that's for sure.
Yeah, okay. So, so, yeah. I was just curious about what I read and, and one of, one of the things that I would say about that is that even though it's really good to have the view of whether the buses are coming, having used that stop a lot. If there would be anything that we could do, and I know it's MBTA property, but to give people some comfort when they are waiting for the bus, because a lot of times it is the wind, that's the issue, and you tend to, when the winds are coming from the north, you tend to stay on the kind of southeast side of the building. But it's just, just an aside, but overall, hey, this is a really good idea. All three of the proposals are great, and so I'm happy to support them.
Thank you.
Great. So we have a motion for approval by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carroll and Attorney Hime.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Shannon Missville?
All right, that brings us to new business. Attorney Hime?
Thank you very much, members of the board. I have one item of new business. It's very exciting. I wanted to just take some time and formally, given the board's schedule in this upcoming special town meeting, to introduce you folks to the new deputy town council, Mike Cunningham, who started today. Mike is a graduate of Holy Cross and Seton Hall Law School. He's been in practice for about twenty years, has extensive workers' compensation experience on both the plaintiff and the defendant's side. And has a number of other terrific sort of pieces in his resume and background, including a starting out working for the State House here in Massachusetts, or at the State House here in Massachusetts. So I just want to give a quick opportunity for folks to say, hi to Mike, this is a little bit unusual compared to the way that we usually do this. But I'm super excited to have him on board as part of this team and to have him not only handling workers' compensation matters for us, but also serving as a deputy town council in a slightly reorganized legal department. So with that, I'll just give an opportunity, if it's okay with the chair, for Mike to say just a few words.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman Hurt and members of the select board. And thank you to Doug. I just really want to say very happy to be here and I really look forward to working for the town of Arlington. I know it's been a long night, so I look forward to meeting all of you in person hopefully at some point. But virtually, I really appreciate the opportunity to say hi tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan, may I say hello?
Um, first, thank you to Mr. Chaplin and Attorney Hime and Personnel Director, Ms. Malloy. Had several conversations around this. I don't want to say newly created position, but it's job duties. Some have been added and newly created. And I want to say welcome to Attorney Cunningham. I'm not trying to say that line, but you look so familiar to me. So I think at some point I've crossed your path either State House or I've been a court reporter, a few proceedings you've been on. But one of the things that
Hopefully in a good way.
Yeah, usually. Well, if I'm doing my job right, you never would have noticed me, but one of the things that I was really and still really enthusiastic about, which I heard you have a very strong suit, that coming in as a deputy town council, really being Attorney Hime's right-hand person and being able to slide into that role as as seamlessly as you can, but also that that's, from what I understand of your CV resume, you do have a subset that definitely matches that as well as a mild to strong interest. So just want to let you know I was pushing for that a lot because Attorney Hime really has been all things in the kitchen, you know, the sous chef, the chef, and the bus person afterwards. So welcome to Arlington and you'll have a lot of fun with all of the members of the board. And I look forward to that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, congratulations, Mr. Cunningham. I look forward to working with you and also, I just want to extend words to Mr. Chaplin and Attorney Hime for the process that they undertook in hiring you. So best of luck and I look forward to, to meeting you in person.
Thank you very much. Everyone and everything has been great, really, out there.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, hi. From one, one State House veteran to another, welcome aboard. Arlington, I look forward to meeting you in person. And, you know, don't, don't be afraid to keep Doug in line a little bit, so as you're coming up to speed, okay? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, I have to say too, for some reason you look familiar, but I haven't spent a lot of time around the State House. But, but welcome aboard and, and, and of course, I don't know you, but I do know Doug and, and and Doug's a great person. I really enjoy working with him. But I will say this, if you think this is a late night, you ain't seen nothing. Take care.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And like my colleague said, welcome aboard. Really excited. I think you're a great choice for that office that, you know, Doug has been really, to say the least, overworked the past few months and, you know, it's a busy office, so it's great to have some another set of hands in there helping. And I don't know if you know this, but Doug for every day at lunch takes about three miles, walks up and down, mouse down. So I don't know if that was a requirement for the legal department for you to join him, but walk right by my office while I'm eating some donuts. But again, welcome. Thank you.
Standing as you said this.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Chaplin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hurt, and welcome, welcome again, Mike. I jumped the gun last week because I thought you had already started, but now you're officially welcome today.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Well, I just have two I just have two quick pieces of new business, members of the board. First, I wanted to provide the board an update. It's certainly taken longer than I had originally intended, but happy to report that today I notified everybody who's been selected to serve on the Mass Ave and Appleton Design Review Committee. So we'll work now to get that committee up and running very soon, so we can start the work of looking at that whole corridor and trying to make it more safer for all for all users. Tied into that stemming from the tragedy that prompted the creation of this committee. I'm hoping that we are right in the finish line of selecting a spot to memorialize Mr. Proctor with a ghost bike. I'll spare the details. There's been unfortunately just some property ownership back and forth of figuring out where the right spot will be, but I hope to be able to finalize that soon and schedule a ceremony to properly honor and remember Mr. Proctor, and we'll certainly let the board know about that once that's scheduled. Secondly, I wanted to just let the board know, and Mr. Diggins may have something similar to share as well, but today municipalities in the entire region were given an opportunity to get a first look at the proposed cuts that the MBTA is talking about. You may have seen some of this reported in the news today. I guess not surprisingly, because I think the cuts were everywhere. There are some proposed cuts that would significantly impact Arlington in terms of either consolidation of routes or a complete elimination of busing routes. So I will be working, I'm still digesting everything we learned today, but I'll certainly be working with internal staff potentially reaching out to Tac and even to the board to figure out the best way for us to advocate to protect Arlington's transportation options through the MBTA. Understanding they have gigantic challenges to overcome, but not wanting to be short-sighted as we are hopefully starting to see something that looks like the light at the end of the tunnel. We want to make sure we have transportation options available to people once the pandemic starts to lift. So that's my new business for today. Thank you.
And Mr. Diggins?
Well, Mr. Chaplin pretty much summed that up. And so it's a complicated issue. And a lot of it's really going to depend on, on how people return to work after we get through this pandemic. So there'll be lots to say, but right now, me and MBTA is into listening mode, so make your voice heard. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Mahan?
Um, had two pieces of new business, but I just got a third. I would love to, through you, Mr. Chair, our colleague, Mr. Diggins and Mr. Chaplin. I just started getting inquiries regarding the proposed changes and the effects it could have to Arlington. And Mr. Diggins already supplied an answer. But if between Mr. Diggins, the Chair, Mr. Chaplin, because it's my understanding, just a quick read, looks, routes, bus lines and routes that would affect Arlington are sixty-two, seventy-six, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-four. And I know we're going to be hearing from more members of the public to say what is the best way to register our complaints with what entity group board commission? So if I could ask if the Chair could work with Mr. Chaplin and Mr. Diggins on that? Because that's an awful lot of bus routes. I've just delved into it, but, and there could be more, so that whether there's something on the town website or whether if we could let myself and others know when we do receive these requests from citizens, if there's a template answer that that's is drawn up and I can just email back and my colleagues can. Or if there's another board commission department subset of the select board that we direct those people to that will oversee and make sure, because when you go on the MBTA site, I found a different site and the site that Mr. Diggins and he sits on, I believe the MBTA Advisory Board is our representative. His site that he gave me was much more useful. And I'm still trying to find it myself as I go through what the MBTA has provided. So I just want to make sure that people want to provide input. They know the best way where to send it, and it eventually gets to the MBTA. So thank you on that. And then the other two. Mr. Chaplin had said he might have an answer for this tonight, and if he doesn't, that's okay. I know we recently received a request from Ms. Resendez for her father. It unfortunately did not fulfill the criteria for the Public Memorials Committee, but she was directed to a program that our recreational director, Mr. Connolly, has, which I must say I wasn't aware that program existed. And my question is, either you, Mr. Chair, or through you to the town manager, exactly what is that program? Is that something that's brand new and we should be encouraging people? Or is that something that's been in existence and there's only one, two, three more bench opportunities available?
Mr. Chaplin?
So I was not able to finalize this issue for the agenda tonight, but yes, the, what I've learned is you're correct, Mahan, that the Public Memorials Committee did not deem the request by the Resendez family to meet their criteria. The Parks and Recreation Commission does have a longstanding program where they, whereby they will allow donated benches to be placed within parks and recreation properties with memorials or plaques memorializing somebody. And there is no limit, or at least no, there's no no, no, no limit within reason. You know, I suppose if we started just giving in data, there could be some, but there is no limit on benches being donated on parks and recreation property. The challenge with this particular issue is where the family would like this platform in the bike path is not under the jurisdiction of the Park and Recreation Commission. It's under the jurisdiction of my office. So I'm now trying to figure out without, without creating a whole new program, if we can find a way to meet the, meet the request of the Resendez, Resendez family again, without, without opening up a whole new precedent.
Okay, thank you. My last piece of new business is regarding the superintendent finalist interviews. I know that our colleague on the school committee, Ms. Morgan, has sent out the two finalists named a couple of paragraphs of information as well as a schedule when Zoom meetings will be conducted to present the two finalists. So my question, either you, Mr. Hurt, or Mr. Carroll, who's our designee to this process that brought us these two very qualified candidates, where each member of the board has received an invitation to look at their schedule and sign up, is that something all five of us should endeavor to do? Is that something Mr. Carroll and/or Mr. Hurt is Chair of the Select Board, that that's the way, I don't know if the way the process is written up that when we got to this point that the Select Board should endeavor all five of us to be there, or I'm just wondering, you know, because I have a couple of scheduling things, but I can move around.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, actually, we, to be honest, Ms. Mahan, we weren't actually involved in this portion. I mean, the committee I served on was simply the screening committee for the superintendent search. My, I got the same thing that you did, and my understanding of reading it is that they were polling not only the Select Board, but a number of other town committees as well, just to get a sense of what the general feeling was, and that they were going to throw out proposals from the school committee. Uh, once they get that back. I can check in with Ms. Morgan and see, see what the thinking is and where it looks like those responses have gone.
Okay, all right. If, if Mr. Carroll or Chairman Hurt, if you could find out, my thing would be at least one of us should probably be able to schedule ourselves into that meeting. But if you can get a sense from Ms. Morgan, our colleague on school committee, if they truly want all five of us to try to make both of these, or if it's they're extending it, at least one or two of us do it.
Yeah, my impression, Mr. Chair, through you, my impression is they were providing options. So if we wanted to just attend the community forum, we could do that. If we wanted to just attend the school committee, we could do that, and they want to try to accommodate. That was my impression from the read, but I can check with.
Yeah, if you can. You know my allergy to, allergy to unnecessary meetings, so I just have to be cognizant of that.
When you go home, you can yell across your porch to Chairman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm all done.
Do it now. I know. Lean out the window and ask her. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Mahan's question about where to make feedback. So if you go to the MBTA, MBTA dot com's homepage, and you scroll down just a little bit, there is a big thumbnail called forging ahead. You click that, then you will find the ability to make online feedback. And also you'll see a list of all the virtual meetings that they're having over the next two to three weeks. And there are some that are geared toward specific lines. But the policy of the MBTA is that even though they may have a given area, anyone can show up and comment on anything. And, and I'm going to make this offer warily. You know, you can, you can send email to me too. It's not that I don't want to deal with it. It's more I'm afraid of the volume I will get that I may not be able to respond to it, but, but I'll do my best. Because I do have multiple ways of giving feedback to the MBTA. So but, but do it the way that I just suggested. Go to the MBTA homepage, but also feel free to let me know what you comment to. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Carroll?
I have no new business. Thank you.
Mrs. De Corsi?
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, just briefly. First, those of you travel up and down Lake Street have noticed that the paving for the intersection of the bike path crosses Lake Street was just completed last week. I understand from the town manager that there's still some issues getting the lights running, the, the, the infrastructure is there. It's just the connection. So I'm hoping in the, in the next couple of weeks that we will see that installed. It's been a a long time coming, and it looks like it's going to be a big improvement for that intersection. But that's actually the only new business I had.
Thank you. And my two pieces of new business I mentioned also at the last meeting we had, but I do want to thank the Arlington Rotary Club for their flags for our Heroes event that just happened this past Sunday. You can, the flag is still displayed up at Park Circle. If anybody goes up there and wants to check them out, it's a cool event and raises money for Arlington Youth, so it's a great cause. And then we did, due to the pandemic, we're not having our traditional Veterans Day ceremony, but we did film our individual portions of the event last week, and that'll be available at eleven AM on Veterans Day via ACMI. And with that, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair, just want to note Sean Keen's green block with the white J might be giving the green block with the white J might be giving the Jets a little bit of extra luck. Uh, they're leading right now, ten to seven, but with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Mrs. De Corsi?
Second.
All right, Attorney Hymn?
This is Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Janice Spoh, good night, folks.
Thank you.
Hey, good meeting, guys.
Hi, thank you.